Thank you for coming to today's Housing Land Use and Transportation Committee. We'll call to order, will the clerk please call a roll?
Lloyd.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Driscoll.
Here.
Gabbard.
Here.
All right, committee members, we have an agenda before us. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We also have the approval of the October 9th, 2025 minutes. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, great. We're on to our new business for today. We're going to be having a discussion on neighborhood traffic calming. We have Evan with us and Cheryl as well, and a third person who I don't have written down.
I've got introductions in a second.
Okay, great. And this is my item, actually. Excited to talk about it. I don't think anyone up here, actually, let me say it the other way. I'm sure everyone up here gets a lot of calls from constituents about wanting their neighborhood traffic to be calmer, I guess, to be straightforward. They want to feel like they have a safe place to hang out, walk around, walk their dogs, go for a bike ride, and so I brought this forward because we have a strategy in place. We'll talk about that, and we're just going to talk about if there's any ways that we can make that strategy a little better. So with that, I'll let you take it away, although I see we...
Maybe not.
Can we get rid of that?
Just X it out.
Just X it out and see if it's, see if all goes well.
All right.
Let's find out.
She'll drive while I...
Okay, all right.
So, good morning, all, and thank you for this new business item and referral. We're glad to meet with you this morning. As you mentioned, Cheryl Stacks, our transportation manager, is joining at the table, and then this is David Hagerty to my left. He's our neighborhood transportation coordinator. He's probably most likely to join you at neighborhood association meetings if traffic calming is on the list, or any concerns about parking in a neighborhood. He's been with us for over a year now, making the rounds and definitely get the ground running, so we're happy to have him, happy to introduce him to you today. We'll also have members or leadership from the Fire and Police Department with us this morning, as questions may come up that they could help answer, and ironically, a couple of them are stuck in traffic. But I assure you, it's not just because of traffic calming, it would be an interstate-type issue. So we're happy to go over some background with you, and then tell you about a few of the things we're thinking about changing in the program, and we'd love to get your questions and your feedback about those changes, or any other feedback that you have for us this morning. So what is traffic calming, and what does it do? And it can be described in different ways, but I hope you like what we came up with in the memo. Traffic calming is the process of modifying roadways to change driver behavior using self-enforcing physical or psycho perception means. And what it does is improve the quality of life and safety in neighborhoods by reducing excessive speeding, or cut through traffic, or both. And in these pictures, you can see a couple of different options for traffic calming. On the left is a vertical traffic calming element, a speed hump, and on the right is horizontal. So there will be a test at the end for what's vertical, what's horizontal. You'll see where that comes into play a little bit later in terms of where we can use the different strategies, and where we might want to change that in the future. And this, these are examples of physical means of speed, of using speed humps, which really are the most effective, cost-effective and effective way to reduce speeds significantly. That's what you can see on the left, and we also have other variations, which would include speed tables that you can see on the right, which is essentially an elongated speed hump that you can drive over a little bit faster. A speed hump, you have to slow down to about 15 miles an hour to make it comfortable, and a speed table has a design speed of 20. Here, we can also use friction or narrowing, that's kind of that psycho, psychological part where you just feel like you're squeezed, so you're not driving over anything that jostles you, or you're afraid to hit it too hard because it's going to make your head hit the top of your car, but it just squeezes you down and you slow down because of that perception issue. And here's another lateral shift, and a chicane, similar but a little bit different. And we can also use raised intersections, which really helps in the case where you want to slow down traffic in all four approaches and through the intersection, which intersections are where we oftentimes have our crashes. And here's another example, traffic circle. You know, the traffic circles are smaller, roundabouts are larger, really, the larger they get, the better that they work, and we found that if you, we and others have found if you try to make a traffic circle where it doesn't fit, it doesn't work really well. So this is about as small as you can go to have an effective traffic circle. This would not be considered a roundabout, but what's great about these is it slows traffic, it slows it in all directions, and these often take the places of two-way or four-way stops, and they're more efficient at circulating traffic, and also, when you have crashes, you tend to not have serious crashes. You don't have the T-bone crashes. You have side swipes. You have property damage crashes rather than bodily injury crashes. And further, what's traffic calming, and how do we use it? It's really a premise we operate under in that we can't have traffic calming on every single roadway in the city. Not only would it be extremely expensive to implement that and time-consuming, but it would have other unintended consequences. Some of them are listed on the screen, and as our partners in public safety would probably agree, or I know they agree, that if we overuse traffic calming, we will have, we will maybe cut down on crashes, which is one of the intentions of limited traffic calming, but if we had speed humps on every road, it would get to the point where it would negatively affect their response times for calls, whether that be police or fire. And if we had no criteria, very low criteria, I think that would be where we would end up. So later, we'll propose softening some of our criteria, but we caution against softening it too much. And in the next few slides, I'll go through these quickly, but wanted to demonstrate that the program is supported by the city's comprehensive plan. It gives us some guidance and some restrictions. So here's the first one, another one about an objective about preserving neighborhood integrity, and here's the directive about using traffic studies and data in the process, as you know, we do that. And finally, the plan reserves vertical traffic calming for local roads and neighborhood collectors. Only horizontal measures can be used on our major roadways. And here, I will hand it over to David to continue to give you a little bit of history and current events for traffic calming.
Good morning, everyone. So I'll give a brief history of traffic calming here in St. Pete, and then discuss our current program and some recent trends that we've been seeing. The city began developing neighborhood traffic plans back in 1999, and these plans identified locations for traffic calming devices on a neighborhood-wide scale. They included significant input from neighborhood associations and required a neighborhood-wide vote in order to be adopted. Today, the traffic calming program is well-established with over 1,400 devices installed. The program has changed since it started in that we now usually assess the need for traffic calming devices on individual streets when a request is received, instead of planning on a neighborhood scale. Today, a traffic calming request needs to be initiated by a property owner or tenant on the street where traffic calming is being requested, and traffic calming measures are only considered after a traffic speed and volume study is completed. We have separate criteria for evaluating a speeding concern versus a cut-through-traffic concern, both of which can qualify for traffic calming measures. For evaluating a speeding concern, to consider traffic calming, we need to see three things on the street, the first being that the street needs to be a local or a neighborhood collector road with a speed limit below 35 miles an hour. The 85th percentile speed of traffic needs to be above 35 miles an hour in at least one direction, and at least 2/3 of the impacted households need to be supportive of traffic calming as determined through a petition. To determine the 85th percentile speed and volume traffic on the road, we have traffic counters that we set up in each lane, and you can see them here on the screen, they're just a few inches by a few inches wide, very discreet. When we're assessing a cut-through-traffic problem, again, there's three criteria that we're looking for, similar but slightly different. Again, the street needs to be a local or neighborhood collector with a speed limit under 35. There needs to be a measured cut-through-traffic problem, and again, at least 2/3 of impacted households need to be supportive. The determination of whether a street has a cut-through-traffic problem is based on road context and using engineering judgment and industry guidance to determine what a reasonable amount of traffic on the road would be, and we compare that to collective traffic volumes, again, using those counters. Just a quick note on road classification, we determine that using the Future Major Streets map, which is provided in the city's comprehensive plan, and by doing that, it ensures that we're considering future growth through the process. Another side note on petitions, we accept one vote per household from an owner or a tenant age 80-plus, and voters are given three options when they receive the petition. They can either vote yes, they're supportive of traffic calming, no, they're not, or yes, but not abutting their property. Assuming a location has a successful traffic study and petitions, traffic calming devices are only installed after we receive approval from Transportation and Parking Management, so this department, Engineering and Capital Improvements, Stormwater, Pavement, Traffic Operations, and the Neighborhood Association if one is active. The approval process can be iterative, and staff will work with the association and internal departments to find an acceptable traffic calming solution. Approved locations are then put in a queue for installation by SPTO. The charts on this slide provide a summary of the traffic calming requests which were evaluated in 2024. The city received 110 unique requests which were eligible to be evaluated for traffic calming, and of those, 24% of the requests met the speed or volume criteria in order to move through the process. Typically, the next step would be the petition. Of that 24% that was eligible to move forward, 39% had a successful petition, 46% had an unsuccessful petition, and 15% did not require a petition because it was a low-impact device, something like a radar feedback sign, where we would get approval from the association first to skip the petition. This next slide shows the trends that we've been seeing over the last three years, which are largely similar. Between 2022 and 2024, we received between 94 and 122 annual requests for traffic calming measures which were eligible to be studied, and during those years, between 8% and 7%, depending on the year, ultimately qualified for traffic calming to be considered based on a successful traffic study and a successful petition. Once again, to briefly summarize, while many traffic calming requests may not ultimately qualify for traffic calming measures to be installed, the program is still very active with over 1,400 devices installed to date. The reason that some streets are not qualifying is because our program targets frequent, excessive, and unreasonable speeding and cut-through-traffic. And with that, I will pass it over to Cheryl.
Thank you, David. Our annual budget has grown in recent years from $100,000 annually to $150,000 annually beginning in fiscal year '24, which coincided with our practice to return construction efforts back to internal resources. The funding is provided through the Penny for Pinellas, and traffic calming devices are now constructed and maintained by SPTO staff, as David mentioned. That annual budget, again, is allocated to the program, which focuses on traffic calming on our residential streets. For major streets, any traffic calming is really intended for speed moderation and generally accomplished as a part of major reconstruction. It would include elements like landscape medians, curb extensions, and that are intended to change driver perceptions about the roadway, and generally encourage motorists to drive just a little bit slower. It doesn't include any vertical elements currently, but FDOT has some experimental design standards that are being integrated into state design manuals, which is encouraging. So about the neighborhood traffic calming program, for our program, though, we do have a few changes that we are considering in the spirit of constant improvement. The goal of these changes would be to ensure fairness, remain consistent with best practices, and continue our efforts aimed at efficiency. So the first change we're contemplating is to update our criteria associated with excessive speeding. Instead of using a flat rate of 35 miles an hour for the 85th percentile speed, we would evaluate speeds according to the street's speed limit. So we would consider locations where the 85th percentile speed is greater than eight miles an hour above the speed limit to have excessive speeding. This helps to promote fairness and accounting for differential speed limits, since many of our neighborhood streets have a posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour, while others have a speed limit of 30, and a few have a speed limit as low as 20 miles an hour. The second change we're contemplating is to establish a more definitive metric associated with our volume criteria. Using information from various industry sources, we'd establish a base volume for traffic on the street. We do that to make sure that there's at least a minimum threshold, so we're not overtreating streets that have very low volumes of traffic. Once we see that there's a minimum volume that's met, and there aren't extenuating circumstances, we compare that daily traffic volume with the traffic during the highest hour of the day. So if we're seeing that 15% to 20% of the street's traffic is occurring during a certain hour, it may be indicative of a cut-through issue. It's important to note that while this is indeed more objective than the current practice, we'll continue to retain our ability to exercise judgment for certain situations. When the volume may be associated with a destination that's on the street, such as a church or a school, or when it's a cul-de-sac, that's not cut-through-traffic, and volumes are unlikely to be changed by traffic calming devices in those instances. The third proposed change relates to the options on our petition. We currently have an option where residents can indicate support for traffic calming, but a preference that it's not located in front of their property. This can be limiting and could prevent us from installing devices with the spacing that allows them to be most effective. Removing the "not abutting my property" option allows us to identify the most ideal spacing and locations to address the speeding concerns, but could result in fewer locations having successful petitions. We're also planning, we're also contemplating some added clarifications, primarily to address some situations that are becoming more common for us. We've had more requests to consider traffic calming along streets that include multifamily residential units alongside it. Our current practice is to accept one vote from the condo board or the apartments management to represent the entire property. As noted here, in many cases, the individual units do not directly abut the road where the traffic calming is considered, and it really would be impractical for us to try to obtain a signature for the individual units or even the individual buildings. Here, we're simply looking to formalize incorporation of our current practice. Occasionally, we do get requests for the city to consider removing traffic calming devices. We wanted to formalize a procedure to address those requests and add specific criteria associated with that. It would include those listed here. In short, we'd want to make sure that when we're not removing devices that have only recently been installed, and that we have considerable support for their removal. We'd also provide a timeframe for which we would refrain from considering any new devices and locations where we, where the devices were removed. We want to make sure that we're remaining efficient with our resources. Like much of our work in city government and transportation, the program isn't without its challenges. Two that are reasonably common are listed here. Some residents have expressed displeasure with the city's practice to require the Neighborhood Association approval. We continue to include that, though, to be sure that there's broad support for the devices in addition to the support by the resident stakeholders on an affected street, but it is somewhat limiting in certain neighborhoods. Another is that some residents may want to exert more control over streets that they use that are outside of their neighborhood, but that they drive frequently due to the nature of the street network. In those instances, we continue to allow neighborhood representatives to stay engaged with the traffic calming process, but not necessarily provide determinative input as to the city's decision to install traffic calming devices. I alluded to earlier, but here are some recent changes at the state level that allow for vertical traffic calming on major streets when it's contextually appropriate to do so, primarily associated with raised crosswalks. So we're not slowing down traffic just to slow down traffic, it's really to add visibility and height associated with pedestrians who are trying to cross the street. It really just allows for another tool in the engineering toolbox to address speeding and visibility concerns and address pedestrian crashes. However, our current plan language precludes us from taking advantage of this opportunity to even consider it on roadways with higher classifications. This picture is from Orlando near Camping World Stadium, where FDOT has installed a series of raised enhanced crosswalks, and the traffic calming uses a gentler vertical profile than traditional speed tables. It's better for longer and heavier vehicles, trucks, for example, that are generally expected to use these types of roads. So it does have a different profile and different advisory speed than you would see that we would use on a more residential street. A local example of this vertical element to highlight for you is when FDOT approached us about converting some existing crosswalks on Fifth Avenue North to raised crosswalks to connect between the parking and hospital entrance at St. Anthony's on Fifth Avenue, and we had to turn them down. They were designing the resurfacing project and wanted to enhance the crosswalks that connected. Fortunately, they were able to keep the flashing beacons, and so we do still have a, an enhanced crosswalk, but we weren't able to add the height and the extra visibility that the speed table would have allowed us. This is a picture of what that looks like. These are the crosswalks in general, right here. So we would like to consider some potential amendments to the cop plan as a separate exercise to the neighborhood traffic calming program, but we would only do that after further analysis of the devices that FDOT is using. We want to see how those are being received, what are potential unintended consequences and those kinds of things. We also need to have some time to collaborate with additional stakeholders like PD and Fire and Sanitation, for example, and then allow us some time to put a framework around it, like when's the most contextually appropriate use here in St. Petersburg for that. So that would be an exercise that we would undertake. And with that, I can turn it back to Evan for any closing questions.
Nothing much to close here, just wanted to thank you for your time and welcome your questions and feedback.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Gabbard?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for the presentation this morning. So I'll give a little bit of feedback and maybe a couple of questions. So we can start with the proposed change, number one. I'm going to go to that slide. All right, the speed criteria. Wanted to ask, because you talked a little bit about budget, so we had a situation, what, maybe a year, year and a half ago, where we were trying to do some speed reduction and bring the speed down in Riviera Bay neighborhood. The neighborhood had come together, they had asked, they wanted to be a 20 mile-per-hour neighborhood. It's a very large neighborhood geographically, and so at that point in time, we were hopeful that we would be able to get a grant to do that, and we had gone through that process and were pretty successful up to a point. And then that grant got pulled back. And so I wanted to kind of talk about that in the form of the budget, because when we looked at it to do it ourselves, it was outside of the budget that we had. So, you know, we'll be starting our council process again, and can we talk a little bit about, and maybe we can use that particular neighborhood as an example, if city council were to allocate additional budget to this bucket, you know, do we kind of have a plan where we're looking at neighborhoods across the city, we're engaging with them in neighborhood meetings to find out maybe how many neighborhoods there might be that are looking to reduce their speed? I live in a 20 mile-per-hour neighborhood. It makes a big difference, it makes people feel a lot safer, and if you're going 21 miles per hour, the neighbors are in the front yard yelling at you. So it works. So how could we kind of work together with your department and council to increase that budget enough to where maybe systematically over the next few years, we could get more of those neighborhoods to that speed limit?
Sure, I'm glad to talk about that a little bit. One thing that I'd like to do is give, you know, Stormwater some credit here, because we started having them build the speed humps in-house. What had happened was, we were getting a contractor price of about $5,000 per hump installed. They would do it as part of the annual resurfacing program, we'd use that same contractor, and then all of a sudden, they wanted $15,000 per hump. And we had this big backlog that was created because we couldn't afford that, and now Stormwater's building these humps for about $3,000 per hump. So that's really helped with the budget. Another approach that we've used to try to make sure that that $100,000 or the $150,000 is enough for neighborhood traffic calming, is if we get a project that's a standalone that would eat up a lot of the budget, Buster Hill Drive, for an example, we went for, and we worked in coordination with the council member to support an independent budget item asked just to cover that. And I think that moving forward, if we came up with, if we needed money for a speed limit reduction across the city, perhaps that's its own line-up.
Okay.
But I'm also pleased to share with you that some of the grants that we had been awarded or told we were going to win under the previous federal administration that we thought would never happen, they seem to be happening. So that grant that you referred to is not dead.
Okay.
We're still working with...
That's good news.
USDOT, and if we have time at the end, maybe we can give you an even bigger update on that, because we have, we have three grants working through the federal contract process right now, and a couple of them, I thought we had no chance, but it's worked out.
Well, that's good news. Thank you for that update. I think, you know, Riviera Bay, obviously, they've been through a lot in the last year. 20 mile-per-hour speed limit was very important to them at one point, they've had to deal with other things, it will come back onto the radar, so maybe we'll, you know, get some more good news, maybe we'll invite you to a neighborhood meeting at the first of the year, and you can kind of share that update with them.
Sure, and I don't want to belabor this point too much, but David, could you talk about the strategy that we're using now to reduce the cost of signage in neighborhoods for changing speed limits?
So in 13 Street Heights and Campbell Park, we recently reduced the speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour neighborhood-wide, and typically, what you would have to do, if the speed limit is not 30 miles an hour, you'd have to sign every street. So instead, we came up with some customized signage that, when you drive into the neighborhood at any entrance point, it says neighborhood 25 miles an hour unless otherwise posted, and then when you're exiting the neighborhood, there's a sign that says end neighborhood speed limit, similar to like an end school zone sign. So what that means is that unless you see another sign in the neighborhood telling you otherwise, it's 25 miles an hour unless you pass that end neighborhood speed limit sign. So that greatly reduces the number of signs required and brings down the cost.
Nice, perfect, yeah, because those signs, they add up quickly, so, well, that's great news. So moving on to proposed change number three with the petition, this was something I also experienced in one of my neighborhoods, you know, you get the petition, everybody's like, "Yeah, yeah, sure, you can put it in front of my house." And then there's the pesky reflector markers that have to go up, and now those aren't in front of your house, those are in your yard potentially. And what I noticed was that that kind of changed the conversation. Well, I'm fine with it out on the street, I don't want these markers in my yard, for whatever reason. So now you are proposing that we remove that piece completely from the petition. Do you see any unintended consequences with doing that?
Thank you. I think the biggest consequence was that we would see fewer successful petitions associated with, I think, people who might have been okay with driving over speed humps, but not one in front of their house or their driveway. If they don't have an option to say yes, but not here, then they're just going to vote no. So I think that that's probably the most likely, most likely consequence.
Yeah, that concerns me a little bit. I mean, I actually was looking at it from, you know, wanting to kind of beef up that language and be like, would you be okay with the speed hump and the reflective markers or whatever, however that verbiage would go, just so it's a little bit more clear, because I think of the one that we did in the neighborhood I live in, and, I mean, we thought, well, we aren't going to get anybody to agree to being allowed the markers, they can't have the speed hump, right? So I think that maybe could be a little bit more clear for individuals. I don't want us to make a change that could potentially have less success, so...
I think we could, I mean, we're open for any discussion, but I think we can make it more clear that the humps come with signs, because that is more clear, but we've just been put in several situations where you have too many people that, they're good with traffic calming unless it's, unless they have to have traffic calming.
Not in their front yard?
Right.
Yeah.
And then we have a problem with, we have a problem with being able to design it in a way that meets standards, and it's, to me, it's a little bit, I don't want to say hypocritical, but along those lines, like, yeah, I'm good with reducing speed, but I don't want any burden. And we will oftentimes put those, put the humps, if we can, right on the property line, so it's kind of between two homes, and not right out front, somebody's front door or their window, it's off to the side a little bit. We do that with speed humps, we do that with as many signs as we can to minimize that impact. So I guess as it stands now, I would really still like to be able to make this change, but we can make it more clear of that signs come with the humps.
Okay, perfect. And then my last question... And then my last question, and actually, maybe it's also a statement, is regarding the comp plan changes. I do agree, I think we learned that lesson on Fifth Avenue, so yeah, I think we should move forward with that. Any other changes in the FDOT much-talked-about Green Book that we feel like we need to dig into, or is it really just the comp plan that we need to look at?
It would just be the comp plan.
Just the comp plan?
In this instance.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you all for the work that you do. Always a pleasure having a presentation from you and working with you for our neighborhoods. So thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Councilmember Harding?
Thank you, Chair. Evan, thank you very much, David. Welcome. You guys inform me tremendously about this topic. Evan, I think you unwittingly just created NIMFI. You'll be hearing about that, or you'll be meeting next Tuesday night. A little bit more complicated, but okay. That's your problem now?
Congratulations.
And Councilmember Gabbard touched on speed limits, and that was mine. We talked about vertical and horizontal, and horizontal is this way, right? Am I, yeah?
It's like the shifts or the narrowing, the perception, rather than having to drive over.
I just wanted to make sure I set for the test. But we didn't, but we didn't talk about the speed part of it. So it is within the purview of the city to change speed limits on roads that we control?
That's right.
And to lower them? And, okay, and do we have any, any, any data on results of doing that? How does that, in other words, how does that, where does that fair in terms of other traffic calming measures?
We've done before and after studies with humps, and they're effective. In terms of just changing the speed limit, we know through other studies that were reviewed, not necessarily our own, that if you reduce the speed limit by five miles an hour, you're not going to have a five mile an hour reduction in speed. You're going to have a more nominal reduction, something like two to two and a half miles an hour with that. But if you couple it with traffic calming, then you can definitely achieve the desired result.
Okay. All right, there have been a couple of requests. I wanted to, I wanted to get that story straight. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
And one bit of clarification is, of course, the state does have some boundaries for us on setting the speed limits. There's a speed zoning manual. There's really, we can't have 10 mile an hour speed limits, for example. 20 is definitely the lowest we can go in certain situations for certain school zones, and in certain cases, you can go down to 15. But generally speaking, anywhere from 20 to 30 in a neighborhood is within the city's purview.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Quite a few questions here. And I love how you take an individualized approach to which tool to use to solve which problem. Tell me about raised intersections versus raised crosswalks, and is there a cut and dryway that you decide which one is better? I like both. But I'm wondering, like, how do you decide which one, which one is the best option?
I think it mostly depends on whether you're trying to safely accommodate frequent pedestrian crossings, or if you're just trying to calm traffic in a certain area. Because if you create a raised crosswalk that barely anybody's going to use, you might as well just create a speed table. And the speed, the raised intersections will help, like we talked about before, in all four directions. It costs more to implement, it's larger, but those are generally the two aspects. But Cheryl or David, if you want to add to that, please do.
Yeah, I think the raised intersections, you would, spacing between the devices is really kind of critical and kind of a key determinant factor, right? So sometimes, and then driveways are also what is a big challenge for us in determining where we can locate tables and devices. So when we have a raised intersection, then we don't have driveway impacts and those kinds of things. But how far apart are the intersections that would allow that to be done? So generally, we're looking at trying to achieve spacing that's between 200, 250 feet to about 600 feet between the devices. So we would look to see what's most appropriate, and then again, what are the pedestrian generators? What are the sidewalk connections up to the crosswalks? And what is the general pedestrian activity? Does it make sense to have people cross here versus somewhere else?
Okay. So I'm thinking about two high pedestrian traffic areas, and these are two intersections we have where we had street murals removed, Grand Central and USF St. Pete. So let's use those as examples, because we all know, and the science and the data tells us, that that was a tool to help make those intersections safer. We do not have that tool anymore. And so I'm wondering, out of the tools that we can use, is one of these the answer? And I'm thinking for USF St. Pete to have, what's the difference between a raised intersection and a speed table?
They generally have the same profile, it's just one's longer. One covers the full intersection and one is only, you know, 20 somewhat, about 20 feet.
Yeah. So is, and I don't want to get too much into like specific solutions, but I'm hoping that you're thinking about these things, because safety is still the top priority. We lost the tool that we had. I'm hoping that we're looking at ways that we can implement other options to make those streets safer. That USF intersection with, you know, with the students crossing so constantly, it really does, it really does make a difference. I use that intersection a lot myself, so it comes to mind. And then, you know, Grand Central just keeps getting more and more popular, and, you know, we've had incidents in the past there or at other intersections. And I'm hoping that there could be maybe a district-wide throughout the Grand Central District to figure out how to make that safer for pedestrians using whatever calming devices are best. So is that something that you all have had any conversations about, even among yourselves? Like, now what do we do?
To an extent, yeah, absolutely. We have had those conversations. I think in Grand Central in particular, there's a Grand Central Master Plan, and it did call for increasing the number of bullbells, potentially looking at all-way stops. Now, there's certain criteria we'd have to meet in order to do all-way stops and stops on Central, which could be a little challenging for operations, but it did look at that, and we need to, it kind of goes back a little bit, I think, to the roadway classification and double-checking and making sure that we're, it's permissible for us to do a vertical device on a road like Central Avenue, right? So that's something that we would need to check. We did have some potential countermeasures that we were looking at at Sixth and Second, working with USF St. Pete's Pete Police Department. So we've got some opportunities that we're kind of mulling about around there to kind of help improve safety for the students in that intersection as well.
So we can look into that further, but just quickly looking at the future major streets map, it looks like Grand Central, Central Avenue is eligible for vertical traffic calming.
Okay. I want to move to the multi, slide 33, the multifamily residential consideration. I have, I have a concern about condos and apartments having one vote from the board or from the property management, because you're talking about a lot, so let's say it's an apartment building with 100 units. So you've got one vote representing 100 people, and if that complex takes up a block and on the other side of the street are four single-family homes, four people can vote no and/or yes, and it affects 100 other people. You know what I mean? Like, there's just, there's a balance that I think needs to be struck. It's really difficult to get that many people to respond, but I worry, and this is a current practice, so, but since it says that the changes are not being considered, I'm wondering if we can take a closer look at that. The example that comes to mind is the Lake Magory Apartments. So that's a newer apartment complex. It has around 300 units, something like that. Across the street from it, there's Mobile Home Park, and a few other residences, small multifamily. So you've got very few votes total that affect hundreds of people.
Are you more concerned that it might be preclude the traffic calming from happening, or that traffic calming might happen that some of the people don't want? Or is it both?
I think it could keep us from implementing traffic calming.
So if we required a vote from all 100, I think it would be hard to get to that two-thirds threshold. But I would also say from my recollection, I'll see what you guys think, usually these places say yes. Have you had no's?
Most of them say yes.
Okay, so it's really not a problem.
It hasn't been a problem.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's just, I want to make sure everyone gets heard on that. And with taking out that third option, the NIMFI option, can you, it might help if on the petition somewhere is the plan, like where it would be, so that if yes or no are your only options, and, but you can see like a picture of where something is going to be put in, then they might vote yes, because they can see that it's not right outside their front door.
So the petition process is much earlier than the design process? So I don't know if there's a practical way to do that.
We do use the results of the petition to inform the design to an extent, too, at least currently with that not in front of my property option and with the no vote. So we, to the extent possible, we tailor the design to suit the results of the petition. So by putting, by planning a design early, we're basically saying, where are they going to go without incorporating that feedback from residents?
Okay.
The county does it, or used to do it that way, where they would have an illustration on the back of the petition, and that's how they kind of work their program through.
Okay. And then I would be very supportive of a change to the comp plan. It just makes sense. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hanowitz?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for the presentation. So I'll start off with an item that Councilmember Gabbard and Councilmember Harding mentioned, which is proposed change number one to speed criterion. So can you just elaborate what the process is for neighborhoods to change to a 20, I think it's 25 mile per hour? When I was a neighborhood president and Mike Jeffries and we had this conversation, city council had passed the blanket speed limit for the neighborhood that they can go ahead and go forward with a 25 mile per hour speed limit if they have the vote in the neighborhood. And so can you just kind of go over that process?
Yeah, I'll ask you to.
So to reduce the speed limit in a neighborhood, right now, it's typically on request from, typically it starts with a resident, and we ask them to get in touch with their association to make sure there's broader support. And if the association is supportive, we just do like an engineering analysis for that specific neighborhood and write a memorandum that's approved by engineering, and we're able to proceed. Typically, it's not extremely complex, if we're just dealing with neighborhood streets to go from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. It's really just a contextual, contextual check that that 25 mile an hour speed limit makes sense.
Speed zoning manual.
Yeah, and that's in keeping with the speed zoning.
And state laws. State laws allow it for it.
Yeah.
As far as an engineering.
So, so one of the issues that came up was obviously the signs you have to, you know, there was a posting of all the signs. I know when we had this conversation in the neighborhood, people hate sign pollution. It's like, oh my God, there are signs everywhere. They want slow traffic down, but they don't want the signs. So I like that kind of balance that you all came up with, with finding a way to reduce the signs, which is good. But I'm just curious, and maybe we need to heal from legal and law enforcement, what are the requirements for, and from you all, for the legal requirements for noticing a speed limit? Like, what is that a minimum that we have to be doing? Because you said there could be X amount of number on signs. Are there other ways where we could do it, where we could say it in ordinance, like these are all the neighborhoods? I'm just curious of what are the mechanisms? Because frankly, in our neighborhood, we have some streets that are 20, that are 20 miles an hour, because you have Crescent Lake Park, right? And if there was an opportunity to reduce signs and say, put X amount of signs and take away all the signs from the entrances of every street in Crescent Lake, I guarantee you the neighbors will want to do that. So having said that, I'm just curious of how you determine that. You see what I'm saying, Evan? Because it's not clear sometimes what the entrances of neighborhoods are, and I want to make sure that enforcement possibilities are there.
Yes, I'll start off by saying that if there's nothing posted, then the speed limit's 30 miles an hour.
Right.
And that the plan that we've come up with for the gateway signage, where it's just at the entrances and exits, that's as, that's as low as we can go. And I don't know if you'd want to hear from the traffic division about whether that could cause them extra problems. Like, I'm sure that the more signs there are, the easier it is for an officer to say, "You just drove by a sign that said 25," versus if there's fewer. But, so it's a, it's a balance, I think, but the plan we came up with is probably as light as we can go and still have enforcement.
No, and I get that. I'm just curious of like how the officers know what the neighborhood boundaries are and what the areas are, because as we know, it's not a box every time. And it goes, it changes, like Crescent Lake starts at 12th Avenue North. It doesn't start on the main street. In our neighborhood, it's 20. It may not be next door. So I'm, I'm really curious about that balance, and if there are ways where we can ensure that we can do what you're doing, still be able to enforce, whether it's making sure maybe it's part of an ordinance. And look, I don't need an answer today, because I'm just bringing this up right now, and you may not be prepared for it, and that's fine. But that's kind of where my mind is going to ensure that we can have enforcement, if it does require maybe having an ordinance. Look, all these neighborhoods in our city are having the boundaries or having the maps included. That's just kind of what I'm throwing out there, because people don't like the signs in every street. It's just in the act of design.
I don't think there's a need for an ordinance if you want to, if you want to see if Lieutenant Levy would like to address it now or?
Yeah, that would be great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So when my officers go to court, they have to prove, the verdict is proven, whether it's a magistrate or a judge. So normally, typically, they will sit past the sign where the speed limit is, so they can have it where it is. You know, and like Evan said, the ordinance, if it's 30 miles an hour, if it's not posted. So from a legal standpoint, that's where we're at. We want to make sure we prove the case. I understand your issue about sign pollution and to try to find that balance. The school zone is the best. Obviously, they sit within the speed limit sign and the flashing beacon, so there's no doubt about it. And they'll even laser it where, how far they're sitting.
Right. Right. So at the end of the day, oh, no, it answers my question. I mean, at the end of the day, having to sign on every street is the way you enforce it, because if you go to a courtroom, yeah.
Right, if the judge or the magistrate asks, when the defendant says, "I didn't know what the speed limit was, I didn't know," the magistrate's going to ask the officer, "Where was it?"
Right. No, it makes it easier, but they're also, they can't claim ignorance of the law either. So whatever, my point is, getting rid of the ambiguity, whether it's by ordinance or by sign, could be ways where you can tackle the issue. You see what I mean? And they can't say, "Well, I'm ignorant of what the ordinance say." The ordinance say this is the speed limit in the neighborhood. That may be a way where you can tackle less signs. And so I'm just throwing that out there, but I, that's kind of where I was getting at.
Understood.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's just something I want to kind of look at, to see if that's a possibility to make sure if we can include something in the ordinances to ensure that we can enforce less signs. That's, that's where I was going. But I think, I think this is great. I mean, FDOT wanting to have the raised sidewalks on the bigger roads is fantastic. I will say, and nobody's brought this up, traffic circles. So I'm curious... So I'm curious of when you use traffic circles. I believe in historic Kenwood, there's some traffic circles.
That was that picture.
Huh?
That picture.
Right. And that's where the, the circles, I don't know if there's other places in the city. But I'm thinking of collector roads. Like 30th Avenue North between neighborhoods. We get a lot of complaints of those kind of bigger roads. They're not the biggest roads, but they're the bigger roads and you get a lot of traffic on those roads. And I'm just wondering what you all think about traffic circles. Is it, you know, something that people hate, very divisive? I don't want to bring up something that drives people crazy, but.
They are, they are divisive and people in the United States can't seem to figure out how to.
How to use them?
Whereas other countries.
Yep, they use them all the time and they're fantastic.
Even other states like Colorado use them a lot more than we do. But they are, they are very effective. The one that's closest to my house, the neighborhood refers to it as the circle of death. Even though there's never been a fatality at that intersection. People just don't tend to like them, but we're not afraid to use them in the appropriate context. Again, they need to be big enough. And then to build a large one, it gets very expensive. So that, that could be a separate line item. But I'll, I'll kick it to the traffic engineer and see what Cheryl would like to say.
Right-of-way constraints usually dictate whether we can use them or not. Yeah, I like them. I think that they encourage yielding behavior. They generally put the crosswalks in a position that is, you know, a little more advantageous. A lot of times it always stops, you're seeing yielding behavior anyway. So it might, you know, you put people at the right location and right angles and those kinds of things. But typically, right-of-way constraints will almost always kind of preclude us from doing them in a lot of locations where we would like to.
Right. And that's why I was thinking the collector roads because they're a little bigger and they have some of those issues. I mean, somehow Sarasota managed to put traffic circles all over the place. Imagine that. And there's older drivers there that have been driving for a long time. And that's a huge change in their driving behavior.
FDOT has used them very successfully in, in certain locations. Managing traffic during construction of a circle is very, very difficult because people will build a perception about the circle based on their challenges with the maintenance of traffic. But yeah, usually I just, we just find that it's very difficult because you might have right-of-way on one side of the street but not the other. Somebody's got some property over here. We have to acquire easements. It just starts to get a little bit. It gets complicated in a hurry.
Okay. I was just wondering what your thoughts were, especially on collector roads. I've seen them as cities grow. They're using them more in more places. And they use them internationally. And I find them, once you get used to it, it seems like it's very safe.
They're great for sustainability too because there's no power needed.
Right, you don't need, you don't need the traffic signals or anything like that. So, well, thank you all for the presentation and for a lot of information here. Great work. Thank you, Chair.
Yep. Traffic circles have started to get more common in roundabouts. FDOT at Ford Pinellas, I want to say a couple of years ago, like pretty much said like, this is just what we're going to do now. So it's getting a lot more common. Don't see anybody else, so I'll take an opportunity. First, thank you very much for this. You know, I'll say I was inspired by like seeing what other cities had done. There's been a couple of examples recently of cities like taking traffic calming to the next level. And we talked in like meetings about like what Boston's done. I don't know if you got a chance to go look into that. But they've massively expanded traffic calming. So I'm really grateful for some of this. And one thing that hasn't come up, so I'll go right to it, is proposed change number one, the speed on the speed humps. I think that this is sort of what most of my complaints are about is like people narrowly missing qualifying. And I'm really grateful for you addressing that. I will say one thing, you said eight miles per hour above instead of 35. But then if you're like at a 30 mile per hour road, now you're asking for 38. People might not love that one. Like, I might say like 35 or eight miles per hour above, whichever is less. That's the, but other than that, like it's, that's a really good change that I think would be really helpful and, and make it a lot easier for people to understand what exactly they're looking for that. Oh, well, actually, I take it back. It's still that 85th percentile thing that does like confuse people a little bit. And honestly, like, yeah, why don't you all just say like 15% of people going faster than X speed limit? Like, that seems a little more straightforward instead of like 85th percentile talk. But I'll leave that to you, that, because that does get hung up.
Yeah, it is exactly the same thing, but we.
Yeah, it is. I know.
It's a standard term, but we could try to be
Yeah. Yeah.
More explanatory.
Yeah, I just get a lot of questions about that specifically. But I know it's the same thing, but I don't know. That's just, my brain thinks a little differently. Maybe everybody else's doesn't. Okay. Okay, so we've actually talked about it a good bit. And it wasn't in the slides, but like, you know, speed limit changing. There's been talk of 20 is plenty. Just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about that. In my opinion, it seems like, you can tell me if I'm wrong. Like, the study is a big limiting factor. Like, we have to go do the study and it costs money and it takes time. Is that accurate?
Takes time is accurate. Fortunately, we have qualified engineers in our department who can perform the study. So David and Cheryl do that, not for free, but.
Yeah. Well, and I, I mean, I bring it up because we talked about, yeah, nobody's coming here for, nobody's going to work for free. But we talked about, we talked about getting funding to do these studies in a couple of neighborhoods. That's what you and I had talked about, is that.
Right, well, I think we have time. Maybe now would be a good time. Well, first off, let me back up for a second.
Yeah, yeah.
Your idea of eight miles an hour over or 35, whichever is easier to reach. If you all like that, we're amenable to that.
Okay.
That will, I think, help us avoid some other issues, including every neighborhood in the city that's dirty than say, well, then we want a 25 mile an hour limit.
Oh, yeah.
Process those, but it does take time and money. So.
Yeah.
Feedback is as supportive of.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I hadn't even thought about the incentive it might create if we were to do that. But yeah, okay.
So let me ask Cheryl to talk about the three grants. It's a good update. And the 20 is plenty for three neighborhoods to start off is included in that. And we do anticipate being able to bring you all those agreements as soon as we can finish those with USDOT.
Thank you, Evan. Yeah, it's been a little slow going since, as the change in administration has been pretty significant and their perspectives of the grants. So we do have our Complete Streets Implementation Plan update that we got through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. And that one we have brought to you, the funding agreement to council. Thank you all for your support. That's been approved. We wrote a scope for the plan update and that took a little while to get approval from Federal Highways. But they've recently approved that scope of work. So now we're going to work with engineering and procurement to try and release the solicitations that we can get a consultant on board to update our Complete Streets Implementation Plan and really move it forward to be a really, as proactive as Complete Streets has been, but very reactive to a safety analysis. I'm very keen on some data associated with safety for bicyclists, pedestrians and all roadway users. So it'll look a little bit different in that it has a much higher level of crash analysis and particular countermeasures associated with that. So that's the first grant that we've gotten, Safe Streets and Roads for All. The second one we got in Safe Streets and Roads for All is the demonstration grant. And that's the one that I think that you are both kind of referencing with the neighborhood-wide speed limits and reducing them down to the 20 is plenty and doing kind of an experimental approach, kind of reinforcing that new neighborhood-wide speed limit concept that we have kind of shepherded early with Campbell Park and 13th Street Heights that also have kind of limited entry points. So I think that the fact that they have limited entry points was also easy for us to try and, and, and test that, that concept a little bit more. That particular grant with Federal Highways on the demonstration grant, we've been going back and forth on the template language. But I think we're nearing a point where Federal Highways is going to approve that. Once we have their approval, we'll bring it forward to city council for your approval to enter into the funding agreement and get that work underway. It has the neighborhood-wide speed limits. It has some solar-powered street lighting on certain corridors to kind of give us some flexibility on that. It has some prefabricated raised crosswalks, curb extensions, some bike lane treatments, some better bike lane treatments. So it's got a lot packed into it. So we're super excited that we were able to retain the full scope of what we're anticipating, even with the change in the new administration. So good news on that front. The last one that we have was the Reconnecting Communities Grant for the two-way conversion on 8th and ML King Street. We also did just get that draft funding agreement from, from Federal Highways and kicked that off with our grant staff about a week, week and a half ago with Federal Highways. So now we need to fill in the template agreement, make sure that Federal Highways is comfortable with everything in it. And then we'll bring that forward so that we can start the planning for two-way conversion of 8th and ML King Street, basically through downtown. So, so that's the update on those three.
Oh, that is all really good stuff, actually. And I did not, I wasn't aware that like the demonstration stuff was so comprehensive. I, I had, and it's kind of what led me to asking the question because I was kind of confused as to like, why, like going and seeking grants and doing all this study would be so, so big of a deal just to change a speed limit? I know that we have to do an engineering study, but then in my mind, it was like do a study. If, you know, we meet the qualifications to change it, you just like went out there with a wrench and some signs and swapped the signs out. It's like, why is this so, such a big deal? So I'm glad to see that it's more comprehensive. But I also think plenty of neighborhoods would be happy for you to just go out there with a sign and swap the signs out from 25 to 20. So I want to see us continue in that direction, wherever we legally can. I just don't see a reason, like if we can get away with making your neighborhood's speed limit 20, it makes legal and logical sense. Like, I mean, I just don't see why we wouldn't. It's going to make your neighborhood a safer place to walk around in, even if it's only like a 20, a couple of mile per hour reduction. And I'm glad to see a lot of my colleagues bring up a similar thing. So hopefully, I don't know what a path forward on that is. But, you know, we're just here today to like give you feedback and come up with what the next conversation is for this topic. So I think that sounds good. I'll go to the stuff about the comp plan and specifically the change for raised crosswalks on bigger roads. And that's actually something I was really excited to see. We talked about it before. I was really excited to see it because I do get people reaching out about, hey, I'm going to use an example in my district, 22nd Avenue North, like there's all this speeding and what can we do about it? And I just have never really had a tool that I could use other than like a major roadway change. And, you know, this is still not as easy as putting in a speed hump, but it's not a major road, it's not redesigning the whole road. And so Evan, you mentioned it before when we chatted, want to say it out here. Like, you know, there's good examples, like the hospital was a good example. But there's schools on these roads as well that could be a place where we could potentially do this. And I mentioned that because we talked about how there's multiple schools on 22nd Avenue North. So that's, I, I really, I look forward to whatever work we have to do to be able to utilize that tool. And then I want to actually thank Councilmember Driscoll. It's just something my mind hadn't gone to when I was like, yeah, we're losing these traffic calmings. Like, I had been so caught up in the mural discussion that I was like, and I, I had known like, yeah, we're losing traffic calming there. But I hadn't thought like, how are we going to replace the traffic calming there? And that's really important. And you're right, especially in Grand Central and of course, right in front of the university. Yeah. Grand Central is a place we've been working really hard to calm traffic because just a handful of years ago, there was like a spate of accidents there that killed pedestrians. And so I'm proud of the work that we've done there. And yeah, let's think about an easy way to get, get the traffic calming back that we lost as quickly as we can. And then I guess the last thing I'll mention is the proposed change. Well, I'll do two things, of course. Proposed change number two looks good. I like that it's less vibes-based, although I like still the opportunity to do the vibes-based if we need to. And then number three, where you talk about the petitions. Yeah, this is an interesting potential change. And I feel like it's possible to get less people voting yes because of it. But, you know, philosophically, it's like, if everyone says yes, but not in front of me, then it's just, it's honestly like, yeah, I'm a big believer, like we live in society, like there are trade-offs to decisions that we make and we, you know, do things collectively. And if that means, you know, you get it in front of your house, then you get it in front of your house. So I, I kind of support you all changing it. But I'm, I am still open to the conversation. Like clarity may be in there, like we talked about. But if you want to change it to yes or no, like we have to prioritize where we put these things and where we can put them most effectively. And I think this is a fair way to do it as well as to take that away. So just figured I'd give you my feedback on that. That's all I have. I'm again, really grateful to you all for giving us this. I think some of these things will just smooth things out a little bit more. And especially when neighborhoods are reaching out to us. The clarity, the slightly softening of barriers. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And I'm really grateful to my colleagues for a good discussion as well. So we'll go back to Councilmember Gabbard and then Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Chair. Just real quickly on the piece about removal of the traffic calming. I have some concerns about this and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier. I almost forgot. Okay, so, you know, I was kind of comparing the process for when we get a traffic calming device, what the residents have to go through. And I do support that, you know, if it's been less than five years, sorry, like we just installed it. We're not going to take it back, right? Does the resident, in this proposal, would the resident who is making the request be required to go around with a petition to, like, almost like a reverse petition? Is that what the process would be?
I think that's what we would intend.
Okay. So they have to go to all of their neighbors and say, I don't like this. I want this gone and I need you to sign this.
Yeah, let me add a little caveat. We've found that if there's a neighborhood champion that's willing to, you know, they're passionate enough about it. They want it enough that they're willing to walk the petition around. That petition has a lot better chance of passing than if we just mail it out.
Yeah.
But we have had situations where we will work with the neighborhood or we will, will work with that champion that wants to see it done. But they're not comfortable doing it or they had a bad experience for some reason, then we'll say, well, we can mail it out. So we could do it for you, but the chances of it being approved will go, go down. So in this case, we would expect somebody to walk it around, but
Yeah.
there's extenuating circumstances. We can do a mailing.
Well, I would want there to be a mirrored process. So there's a process for getting one. I think that process should be the same for taking it away. And that was going to lead to my next question on the 75% of households. Is three-fourths on getting a device, right?
Two-thirds on.
Two-thirds, I'm sorry, two-thirds.
So we're making it harder to remove.
Making it harder to remove. And that was my point. I wanted to make sure that it was either the same or harder to get rid of it. Okay. And then what, what was the reason for if there's a request to get another one, the seven years?
If, if we've spent the time and the money to put the device in
Yeah.
and then the same street says, we want to take it out.
Right.
Then now we want to wait a while before
Yeah.
we'd consider putting it back in. So we make it even longer, we make it, we're proposing
Yeah.
seven years because we can't be going back to this.
No.
Put it in, take it out, put it in, take it out.
Okay. Well, I have a feeling if we mirror the process, I would be very interested to see how many of these devices would actually even get removed. Because, I mean, especially if it's only been five years, right? I mean, how much turnover do you really have in some of these neighborhoods? I think, I don't know, I just want to make it as difficult as possible, if that makes sense. And I don't have a problem saying that publicly. I just feel like if the neighborhood has come together, I, because I've been through this process in my neighborhood, like it is not an easy process. And there takes a lot of kind of, you know, community building to get. lot of kind of, you know, community building to get these devices sometimes. I would just hate to see, you know, one person be able to kind of lead that effort without it being just as difficult, if not more, to take it down.
This is more difficult, and?
Okay. Got it.
It's in the right place.
That's what I like. So thank you. All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will say briefly, I've offered to my neighborhoods that have had speed humps qualify, and they haven't gone and gotten the petition. I've like said to them, like, I will go collect the petitions for you, like?
I went with the neighborhood champion.
I'm happy to go door to door. It's like a thing that I do all the time.
Yeah.
I haven't had any of them take me up on it quite yet. So I'm hoping that they do, but yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to mention.
I went with the neighborhood champion, and it was a great way to reconnect with some of the residents on that street. So, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Harding?
Thank you, Chair. Off-topic, but we're all here, Evan. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but here we go anyway. Can you give us just a 40,000-foot view of how we're doing with, with the traffic preemption in the fire department, in the, the system they're putting in with traffic lights? Or?
I don't know if?
I know we're working on it. I just didn't know how, if we've gone anywhere with it yet.
I think other people are working on that besides.
Okay, all right. Yeah, no worries. Again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just know it's, it's out there.
I think marshal staff and the fire folks have been directly?
I'll get with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Great. Yes, thank you. And, you know, seeing no other committee members or council members, I will say thank you all for a very good meeting. We're at time for today. We're going to leave this item to come back based off of this feedback. Do you feel comfortable with that? I mean, I see Cheryl.
Yes, I think we could come back with a shorter follow-up and let you know where we landed, but receiving your feedback and how we want to move forward.
Okay, cool. Yeah. And then anything, you know, that you need from us, like, it sounds like we're, after we've been given the information, we all are generally pointing in a similar direction. So I think we could come back if there's any action items. I think we could get them done.
And I think some of these things that we're, we propose to, to change, that they're not in ordinance, that there's consensus on, we'll just start, we'll just change soon.
Okay, all right.
But other things like the comp plan, they're going to take?
Oh, of course, yeah, of course. Wonderful. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. We have our next Housing, Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting on December 4th. We have a discussion on potential actions to appropriately recognize the historic significance of the Lincoln Cemetery and the Greenwood Cemetery. We also are going to have, it's not listed here, but just so you're aware, we're going to have confirmation of a couple of, excuse me, housing authority members. It's an easy thing. I just wanted to mention it since it wasn't listed here. But that's all we have for today. So we're going to call today's Housing, Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.